We will now call a common council meeting of November 7th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorick?
Here.
Alderman Ritz is excused. Alderwoman Marshall?
Here.
Gail?
Here.
Kuzikowski?
Here.
Everybody rise for the pledge, please. Greg, you want to start us off?
I, the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, God, visible, with justice for all.
Approval of minutes of October 17th, 2023. Everybody take a moment or two and take a look. When you're satisfied there's no errors, omissions, or discussions, motion, please.
Marshall will move to approve the minutes of October 17th, 2023.
Lorick, second.
I'll go second. Lorick?
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
And our next two items are recognition, and we have consideration of a resolution of appreciation to Robert D. Maholsky, a retiring detective from the Oak Creek Police Department. I'd like Chief Stuckler up. Kathryn, while Chief's coming up, would you like to read that in the record, please?
Certainly. Resolution of appreciation to Robert D. Maholsky. Whereas Robert D. Maholsky began his employment with the City of Oak Creek on July 14th, 1997, is a full-time police officer. And whereas during his 26 years and four months of service, Robert D. Maholsky has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a patrol officer early in his career, serving as acting detective from June 1st, 2011 through June 1st, 2016, and promoted to the rank of detective on June 11th, 2018. And whereas Robert D. Maholsky has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been a model teammate for those he has worked with, being well-known for his work ethic, his dedication to the department, and his care for victims. And whereas Robert D. Maholsky received 21 combined departmental acknowledgements and awards. Most notably are the Matorius Service Award in 2004 from his actions of rescuing numerous residents from an active apartment fire. Awards for excellence for solving several robberies, the sexual assault of a cold case victim, and an arson, all of which have impacted both the Oak Creek Police Department and the community as a whole. And whereas Robert D. Maholsky served with honor, passion, and dedication on several subunits of the Oak Creek Police Department, Emergency Response Team, and Evidence Technician Unit. Through Robert D. Maholsky's tenacity and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more prepared, capable, and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas for 16 years, Robert D. Maholsky served as a member of the Emergency Response Unit, achieving the rank of Master Operator and serving as an explosive breacher. And whereas Robert D. Maholsky was a member of our Evidence Technician Unit for 15 years, during this time, he attained several certifications. He worked countless hours as an evidence technician assisting with many cases, but especially some of our most important and time-consuming events. Furthermore, he has been a role model and mentor for all of the technicians. And whereas Robert D. Maholsky is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 26 years and four months of full-time service to the City of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the common council of the City of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the citizens of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Robert D. Maholsky for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek and the police department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Robert D. Maholsky and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Robert D. Maholsky, passed and adopted the 7th day of November, 2023.
Thank you, Kathryn. Chief?
Thank you. Detective Maholsky, a lot of it goes without saying, a lot has been done in those 26 years. He also worked for a few years before that at the Milwaukee County Sheriff's Office before we were fortunate enough to have him join our team. Bob has always been a big proponent of the investigations and the victims, and in the last 26 years, there's been a lot of things that have happened in Oak Creek, and Bob was at every single one of those events, either as a tactical operator, an evidence technician, or an investigator of the detective bureau. So a lot of those things that have shaped Oak Creek and the police department within those last 26 years, Bob has definitely had a part of, and I can't stress enough how much of Bob has always been a proponent of the victims, so much so that he would not let things go. Those cold cases, he really took that on to search a lot of those, and that one in that instance took him out to Colorado to actually make an arrest and bring him back here and get that family and that victim justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Council members, anything for Bob? I think the chief touched on it. Bob was a dedicated individual for 20-plus years here of service. It's quite amazing, but really impressive about this, how he came up through the ranks. I was just at a swearing-in the other day for another young officer coming in, and our city administrator kind of said, well, to his family, thank you for loaning us this person for the next 25 years or so. We tend to hang on to our folks, and they tend to excel. They mentor the next generation coming in, much like we've seen at the swearing-in. And Bob was an intricate part of this department for a very long time, and as Chief said, to come up the way he did, the things he did behind the scenes, the public will never know, but the people that were involved in the cases knew the importance of him, and so did the City of Oak Creek. So with that, I'm going to wish him a long and happy retirement for him and his family. And if we could, motion on that, please.
We will move to approve Resolution 12440-110723, resolution of appreciation of Robert D. Maholsky, retiring detective.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
And next, we have consideration of a resolution to Derek J. Slampa, retiring police officer from the Oak Creek Police Department. Kathryn?
Resolution of appreciation to Derek J. Slampa. Whereas Derek J. Slampa began his employment with the City of Oak Creek on January 15th, 1996, as a full-time police officer. And whereas during his 27 years and nine months of service, Derek J. Slampa has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a patrol officer. And whereas Derek J. Slampa has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been a great teammate for those he has worked with and his dedication to the department. And whereas Derek J. Slampa received 14 combined departmental acknowledgements and awards. Most notably are the Medal of Valor and Life Saving Award from his actions at the Seek Temple in 2012, where his actions with his teammates saved lives and countless others from an active shooter. Award of Excellence in 2023 for his work on our Emergency Response Unit. Furthermore, he was honored as a top cop in Washington, DC in 2013 for his actions at the Seek Temple in 2012, all of which have impacted both the Oak Creek Police Department and the community as a whole. And whereas Derek J. Slampa served with honor, passion, and dedication on several subunits of the Oak Creek Police Department, notably the Emergency Response Team and Drug Unit. Through Derek J. Slampa's tenacity and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more prepared, capable, and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas for 22 years, Derek J. Slampa served as a member of the Emergency Response Unit, achieving the rank of Master Operator and serving as a sniper. And whereas Derek J. Slampa served as a full-time undercover drug unit officer from 2009 through 2011, further developing and creating the unit into what it has become today. And whereas Derek J. Slampa is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 27 years and nine months of full-time service to the City of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the City of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Derek J. Slampa for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek and the police department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Derek J. Slampa and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Derek J. Slampa, passed and adopted the 7th day of November, 2023.
Thank you, Kathryn. Chief?
Thank you. Just a little bit more about Officer Slampa. Some of you may know, may not know. Derek was a second-generation officer. His dad was the police chief at South Milwaukee for many years, and Derek followed in his footsteps. Unfortunately, his dad was not here to see him retire. But Derek was an interesting guy. If anyone had any time to meet with him or see with, see him, he loved coming to City Hall during day shift and chatting with a lot of people. Derek, in his outward goofiness, I think sometimes did that to protect himself. He is one of the most caring people that you ever run across, and that was seen by the numerous citizen compliments and cards and thank yous and phone calls that we'd get with him. He really had a way of connecting with people, finding that way to connect and make sure that they knew that he truly cared about what was going on. And Derek will be missed 27 years, and again, somebody that was here for a lot of those big items that happened over the last 27 years, so much as being recognized at Washington, DC by the president back in 2013 for their heroic actions in 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Council members, anything on Derek? Well, I just want to kind of tag along on what the chief said. Derek's 27 years here, you know, are very notable. Obviously, top cop, that's a huge honor for the actions at the temple incident. But more importantly, as the chief said, he was a caring person. He was an ambassador to the city. Detective Services are probably one of the biggest faces, along with DPW, that the public actually interacts with, along with a few people at City Hall, but out on the streets, they're the ones that get to all corners of the city. So Derek served as a frontline ambassador for us for 27-plus years. You take into account Bob's time, we're missing almost 52 years of service, 53 years of experience and service to the city. That's going to be dearly missed by these two individuals. I want to really thank Derek for all his time, his efforts, his skills. You can see by his resume and his resolution that he just wasn't, he just wasn't going to sit still. He progressed through everything, sniper, emergency response, and it's quite a tale and quite a career. So I'm going to wish him and his family a long, happy retirement, Derek and his family as well. If we could, motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We will move to approve Resolution 12441-110723, resolution of appreciation to Derek J. Slampa, retiring police officer.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Item six will get us to our first public hearing and its consideration of a request from Jeffrey P. Jack Ultimate Ninjas for a conditional use permit for an indoor health, athletic, recreation facility on the property at 400 West Bell Court. Kathryn, would you please read that into record?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider requests submitted by Jeffrey P. Jack Ultimate Ninjas for a conditional use permit for an indoor health, athletic, recreation facility on the property at 400 West Bell Court. Applicant is Jeffrey P. Jack Ultimate Ninjas, Tower 9 Commercial Oak Creek LLC. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is October 11th, 2023.
Doug?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development of the City of Oak Creek, and the first of two public hearings this evening is for a conditional use permit for the property at 400 West Bell Court, which would allow for an indoor health, athletic, or recreation facility for Ultimate Ninjas. I'm sure most of you probably heard of, of the, kind of, that sport and that recreational activity through the TV show, but the applicant is requesting conditional use for that type of business for the industrial building, multi-tenant industrial building at 400 West Bell Court. These, of course, are conditional uses within the manufacturing zoning district. This would be an indoor obstacle course-style gym. Up to 10 employees are anticipated during weekends with parties scheduled, and the staff report lists some of the anticipated hours of operation and the employees and some of the peak vacancies. The plans for the building were actually approved back in 2001 with 99 parking stalls, and it's a 51,000 square foot building, plus or minus. And so, well, there's no, there's no specific requirement as far as the, the space for the intended use. Staff feels that the allotted park within that, within that space, especially since it's off-peak from when typically other industrial users or tenants of the property would be using it, will be sufficient for that. The Plan Commission did recommend approval of the conditional use permit, as well as the conditions and restrictions that accompany your staff report. This is a public hearing. I would now ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for an indoor health, athletic, or recreation facility for the property at 400 West Bell Court, please approach the podium, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions and or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And as Doug said, this is a public hearing. We will make three calls. This will be the first. Second call, anybody wishing to speak, please approach the podium. Third and final call. And now close the public hearing and go on to item seven, which is consideration of an ordinance approving that conditional use permit for the Ultimate Ninjas located at 400 West Bell Court. I'll open it up to council for comments, questions.
Seems like it went pretty seamlessly through planning, didn't it?
Very much so. Greg or Chris, anybody want to comment?
Yeah, seems like a very timely and well-meditated decision.
It was all positive feedback. There was no concerns at planning.
A very interesting concept. Hopefully, they'll do very well. Another amenity different that Oak Creek does not have, so very welcome addition. There's no further discussion, questions? Motion, please.
Kuzikowski makes a motion at the common council accepts ordinance number 3083, an ordinance to approve a conditional use permit for indoor health, athletic, recreation facility within the portion of the existing multi-tenant industrial building on the property at 400 West Bell Court.
Lorick, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Item made is to consider a request by Skip Henderson, World Outreach Bible and Training Center, and Latricia Daniel, a Mother's Heart Learning Center, for a conditional use amendment for a private school and daycare on a property at 6912 South 27th Street. Kathryn, if you would.
Certainly. Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Skip Henderson, World Outreach Bible and Training Center, and Latricia Daniel, a Mother's Heart Learning Center, for a conditional use permit amendment for a private school and daycare facility on the property at 6912 South 27th Street. Applicant is Skip Henderson, World Outreach Bible and Training Center, and Latricia Daniel, a Mother's Heart Learning Center. Property owner, World Outreach and Bible Training Center, Inc. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is October 11th, 2023.
Thank you, Kathryn. Doug?
Thanks. So throughout its iteration, this property has served as a movie theater, most recently a church, and is now being proposed for a conditional use permit, or actually, an amendment to the existing conditional use permit for a private school and daycare facility on the property at 6912 South 27th Street. So private schools and daycare facilities are conditional use permits in the Iowa zoning district, and it's really amending the existing conditional use, which was for the religious institution or church, which was approved back in 2017, to allow for these very, I wouldn't say it's very similar types of uses. Per the application information that was submitted, the operations for daycare would be established first, and are anticipated to continue through August of 2025. At that point, it is anticipated that the daycare facility would move off-site, the school would be established in the same space. And there's some details on the numbers, employees, and anticipated attendance as part of your council report this evening. No outdoor operations, including playground areas, are anticipated at opening. However, that option could be explored further, and should that be desirable and be requested, would you have to go back to Plan Commission or the approval of site and building plans? After careful consideration of the proposed conditional use permit amendment at the meetings in September and October, the Plan Commission did recommend common council approval, the request to amend the conditional use permit for this property, as well as the attached conditions and restrictions. This also being a public hearing, or a request that anyone has any questions or comments, please approach the podium, give your name, address, proceed to address your questions and or comments to the common council. This public hearing, as well, is now open.
Thank you, Doug. We will make three calls once again, this being the first. Anybody wishing to speak? Second call, anybody wishing to speak, please approach the podium. And third and final call for the public hearing. We'll now close the public hearing and go on to consideration of that ordinance amending the conditions, restrictions, to allow for the private school daycare on the property at 6912 South 27th Street. We'll hand it over to council for questions, comments. Anything? Greg, your district, anything?
No, no concerns. Again, this went through planning. There was some discussion, excuse me, there was some discussion on it, nothing, nothing major. If you haven't been in the Old Ridge Church, which used to occupy the space, they left all of their access controls there. So once you enter what used to be the lobby of the movie theater, there are locked doors that are controlled for entry to go back to the classroom. So it's really set up for something like this.
Is there any concern about no outdoor operations?
Not at this time. They're going to take it kind of in phases, so they're starting with some younger children, and then move up and eventually it can become the school, and older kids as well. So they, they seem to be taking it in bits and pieces as they go. Thought it was a good repurposing of the property, as Greg said. There's no further discussions or questions? Motion on nine.
We will move to adopt ordinance 3084, an ordinance to amend the conditions and restrictions in ordinance 2851, to allow for private school and daycare facility on the property at 6912 South 27th Street.
Kuzikowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
And that'll bring us to new business, and item 10 is consideration, motion to concur with the recommendation of the Personnel and Finance Committee and amend the personnel policy 5.13.3, holiday pay and personal policy 7.10, paid time off, or PTO full-time, and regular part-time, and policy 7.11, holidays, and establish new personnel policy, creating an extended paid leave bank for full-time, non-represented employees. Tony, you want to explain all that?
Yes, I have a brief presentation to walk you guys through it. Staff have been working with your Personnel and Finance Committee all through this whole fall to try to update our paid time off policy for our non-represented employees. And so this really came about because in the 2022 Employee Sentiment Survey, we discovered that there was an overwhelming sentiment from staff that our PTO policy, as it currently stands, is insufficient, both in the amount of time given and the amount of time it takes an individual to advance through that policy. And to address this, as part of our strategic action plan, we have the objective to ensure policies on fringe benefits and work-life balance are competitive and aligned with today's workforce. So to look into that, staff compared our current PTO schedule with neighboring comparables in this area of the state, and we also compared our schedule to other communities within the state of Wisconsin that operate on a PTO schedule, as opposed to the more traditional sick leave and vacation setup. And when we did that, we had some pretty overwhelmingly consistent conclusions. First, that our PTO levels are too low regardless of your years of service. And second, that it takes too long to increase through that schedule. Third, that it takes too long to reach the maximum. We're employees too late in our career for that to be effective for our employees. And then finally, that we currently lack a short-term disability program to fill that gap that we have because we don't offer sick leave. That often leads to non-represented employees on FMLA events going unpaid. So what you can see before you is our current schedule compared to our proposed new schedule for full-time employees. Under our current schedule, employees start at 18 days, and they stay at that level for a full nine years in their career. After that, you increase a day a year until you max out at 30 years, at 30 days after 20 years of service. Under the proposed schedule, we would start employees higher. They would begin at 23 days. They would stay there for the first three years, and they would receive an increase every three years thereafter. So for the first three years, they'd be at 23 days. After that, they would go to 25, 28 days for years seven through nine of service, and then employees would max out at 10 years. This aligns us much better with our comparables in other municipalities. Our current part-time schedule is a little bit more complicated to explain because our regular part-time employees receive PTO currently based on their scheduled hours of work. To simplify it, the current schedule gives our regular part-time employees one week of their week, whatever their week would be. So if my week is 23 hours per week, I get 23 hours of PTO a year. What we're proposing is to mimic the advancement of our regular full-time employees for those part-time individuals who are eligible for PTO. That means they would start at two weeks of service, which would be a doubling of their current PTO balances, and they would increase in time off every three years until they max at 10 years with three weeks. Again, three weeks of whatever my normal, regular, part-time schedule is. So if as a part-time employee, I work 23 hours per week, I would start at what is two of my weeks, and I would max out at three of my weeks. And then finally, we're creating an extended paid leave bank for our full-time, non-represented employees. This fills our need for a short-term disability program. It allows both the city and employees to proactively fund FMLA events until long-term disability kicks in. Right now, there is a 45-day calendar day waiting period before your long-term disability benefits kick in, and we're looking for a way for employees to plan on how to stay on the payroll during that waiting period. The use of this bank would be limited to FMLA events, so you would have to be under an approved absence under the Family Medical Leave Act. PTO, any, right now, employees can carry over up to 80 hours of PTO. At the end of the year, any hours that I have in my bank over 80, I lose. Instead of losing them, now those would go into this bank, so employees wouldn't leave, wouldn't leave them on the table. You can also, if you want, convert additional PTO into this bank. So if I'm carrying over 40 hours, I could keep it as PTO, or I could put it dedicated into this bank and keep it for future FMLA events. That would be completely up to my personal choice as an employee. This bank would max out at 280 hours, and that was designed so that we could meet that long-term disability waiting period need. And the bank is also not eligible for payout upon separation. The city would offer a one-time front-loading of 40 hours into the extended paid leave bank, and we would do that for all employees at the start of the program and for new hires at the time of hire. The packet also includes some proposed language on a number of policies that include some housekeeping items. We're working on changing our language from days of time off to hours of time off, for clarification, and so there are some other housekeeping items in there as well.
Thank you, Tony. We will open it up to the council for questions, comments. You want to maybe, committee members, you guys want to start?
Thanks, Dan. Steve, did you want something to say?
Yeah, I was going to make some comments.
Okay.
I think we probably had four, if not five, meetings on this during the fall, so, and it took up a lot of time for those not on the committee. And I want to thank Tony. I think he did a lot of hard work on this. I mean, and Max was with the numbers and Andrew, I mean, it was, it was, but when you presented it the first time, it was kind of mind-boggling. I mean, but for those not in the meetings, we, we threw ideas back and forth that, like every meeting, you know, can we do this, can we do that, instead of this, instead of that? And I think he, I think he came up with a, with a great plan, and that's all I have to say. Thanks again. Thanks again.
Ken, you got anything?
I think Lisa has a question.
I do have a question. So, when you talked about the separation and the 280 hours that are in the bank, it's not eligible upon payout on separation. Is that retirement and/or leaving for a different job? I just wanna be clear.
Yes, it wouldn't matter the reason why an employee left. We don't pay it out.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, just to hop on what Steve had to say, we have obviously a very lengthy process. Appreciate staff, the time you invested in actually providing a good fact base of evidence to actually judge, make some judgments on for personnel committee. We appreciate that, and we appreciate the fact that you put up with our continuous ongoing request for more information. So, I know it was a struggle, but I think it was, it was necessary. Alderman Ritz is part of this committee, too, and he had, he had found a lot of anguish in the fact that this hasn't been done in 10 years, so we appreciate the fact that it was brought forward. And obviously, with the catalyst was the, was the engagement survey from last summer. We found a lot of employees, and, you know, facts-based showed that, you know, we were behind the curve in terms of this kind of benefit for employees, and it really has been hurting us, and we've seen evidence of that, Danny, with retention and recruitment. It's been harder and harder to get folks to even take a look at some of the positions in the city because we're just too far behind the curve in terms of what people are looking for in terms of work-life balance. So, that was really kind of how we approached looking at this. We didn't wanna necessarily give back everything we had carved out in terms of PTO, the entire package back, we adopted at the beginning with what we thought. We realized we need to bring this policy into the realm of current days and what other communities are doing in terms of being able to recruit the best employees for our community. So, that's how we judged it, just making sure that we were using the best information, making the best decisions, that we're gonna be benefiting the organization and the community as a whole. So, went through a couple iterations administratively. The first one we settled on was a little bit of a headache, so I think we can settle on a good balance from that standpoint. Really, you know, and unfortunately, I think we've discovered a long way to. We were, PTO is not, not a common, we have doing business in municipal governments, so it was a bit of a stretch there, but there also is the fact that there's a couple communities that are in our compas that are very aggressive in terms of what they do for employees, and very aggressive immediately, which is interesting. So, I'm not sure how those folks rationalize that to their communities, but they do. We chose not to be that aggressive, but I think we have a very, struck a very good balance here, and I think we should be very happy where we're gonna be able to offer employees moving forward.
Andrew?
Really echoing what Ken said, I remember listening to a guy by the name of Jerry Peterson in maybe 2013 at a conference I was at that said, "Our, our community just switched to PTO," and we thought that in the post-ACT 10 world, that that might be something really new and could catch on. And with the comp set that we did find, it really didn't. I actually do believe in the PTO system, but with the way that we structured our PTO system, we still had some gaps. Gaps with the adequacy of the PTO itself, and then, of course, the gaps with the extended paid leave and allowing employees to plan for themselves and their families to bridge potential gaps of medical leave and things down the road that they may, they may have. And like Ken said, I really think we wound up in a great spot for that adequacy. You know, I think the employees will be really, really happy to see their, not only their comments and sentiments acknowledged, but as this thing, you know, kind of materializes and gets communicated out that they do have a little more balance and a little more time off here because we do, we do have a very dedicated workforce, and that's part-time employees and full-time employees and regular part-time employees and irregular. You know, dedicating yourself in a part-time role, whether that's suits your lifestyle or your family unit, or it's just something you really like to do because of the work you do here, you know, that's a big commitment for somebody to do that for a long period of time. So, additional time off for the part-timers was also really important because they do fill critical needs here in the city when we can't have a full-time position in some of those positions. So, I just wanna thank the work of the team. I know you said fall, but I remember a meeting in June when this started, so I'll just back that up a little bit. It's been, it's been, I think, a very well-vetted thorough conversation with the elected folks. It was a very good blend of everybody's roles here, working for the community to, to not only look out for our services that we deliver and the taxpayers, but also the needs of our workforce. So, it's a good, good end result, and I think the organization will be thrilled once we roll this out.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Anyone else? Okay. No, I'm gonna be just a little redundant. I think this was long overdue, as I was mentioning, I think Ken said Alderman Ritz was surprised we haven't done anything in 10 years. It was highly overdue, in my opinion. Like what's been done, at 20 years, you're up there at 30 days. It wasn't happening. I guess the one thing, and Tony, you kind of mentioned it, maybe for those employees that start to go over 20 years.
Ten years, Danny.
Or 10 years. Well, at 20, you're capped, if you're over 20 years, you're never building over 30 days, correct? So, maybe in your 21st year, you pick up half a day or a quarter of a day as your career progresses. Because those at the top really didn't gain much, because as you can, as evidenced by some of our long-term employees and retirees, people tend to stay here. They get very good at what they do, and they stay here, and there should be some justification and a little bit of reward for that as well. This is my personal opinion, not a reflection of the council or anybody else, but these are the people that helped make things run, and there's a lot of institutional knowledge. So, I'm glad it went this way, though. Kudos to everybody, and thank you for doing this. With that, there's no further discussion. Motion.
I will move to concur with the recommendation of the Personnel and Finance Committee to amend personal policy 5.3, 5.13.3, holiday pay, personal policy 7.1, paid time off, personal policy 7.11, and establish a new personal policy creating an extended paid leave bank for full-time non-represented employees.
Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Loric.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
And item 11 is consideration of a resolution declaring the necessity of taking blighted property at 4301 East Depot Road and authorizing the taking of the property. And to explain that is our city attorney, Melissa Carles.
Thank you, Mayor, and certainly our city administrator can jump in or supplement anything that I don't cover, but I think that the report and the resolution rather speak for themselves. This is a resolution of necessity regarding the step that is required before we continue with the process of proceeding legally to take blighted property. This is the property at 4301 East Depot Road. It's come before you in the past. This is the former Highnight property, and previously, as you know, the property was used to manufacture nitrogen-based fertilizer, and it, we have known contamination on the property. So, under the Blight Elimination and Slum Clearance Act, we are allowed to take activities that might include redevelopment and blight elimination to move forward with just that, improving the property. This property has been found to be blighted three times, certainly by way of resolution for TID District Number 13, and in terms of a specific resolution that this council adopted approximately a year ago. And in addition to that, we would like to move forward with the next steps, which would include an appraisal, and then working with the property owner to hopefully negotiate a successful transaction. But at the end of the day, as you all know, this is part of the Lakefront Development Plan for Public Access, and earlier this year, the council approved a North Bluff Planning Study, which provided for this property to be included as part of the park. So, this is a straightforward piece, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Andrew, anything to add? Council members. Is it your district, anything?
Oh.
Okay. I think Melissa summed that up pretty well, to the point of no discussion or questions, so. With that, we can go right to motion, then.
Marshall will move to approve resolution number 12444-110723, declaring the necessity of taking blighted property at 4301 East Depot Road and authorizing the taking of the property.
Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Loric.
Aye.
And item 12 is consideration of a resolution approving the ZONEE Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan as the City of Oak Creek's emergency management plan. With us is Chief Kressek and his team, so turn it over to them.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Kressek, tonight representing the Emergency Management Program for the City of Oak Creek, and I'm joined by Brianna Campbell, Preparedness Coordinator for the City of Oak Creek Health Department. Tonight, we are requesting approval of a resolution that adopts the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan as the City of Oak Creek's basic plan. As you're well aware, a basic emergency management plan is one of those core organizational documents. Really establishes the structure, the foundation for emergency management activities within a community. Post-COVID, we identified that our basic plan was in need of a rather comprehensive overhaul. We started work in late 2022 on that overhaul, and really due to some conversations between the ZONEE emergency managers and public health, came to the realization that there was a significant opportunity ahead of us to combine resources and look at more of a resource-sharing model. With that preamble, I'll turn it over to Brianna to walk through a brief presentation on the plan.
Thank you, Chief Kressek. So, hello, everyone. My name's Bree Campbell. I'm the Preparedness Coordinator. I have a shared role across the Cudahia, Oak Creek, and South Milwaukee-St. Francis Health Departments. I'm just gonna talk briefly on the development of the ZONEE Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, or SEMP. So, for some background, as Chief mentioned, in September of last year, I had offered my assistance in updating the municipal-specific emergency management plans across the zone, and at that time, we had acknowledged that the plans were vastly different from one another. So, the idea was proposed to create a ZONEE SEMP that would be a combined emergency management plan and would allow for greater coordination, collaboration, and communication across the jurisdictions in ZONEE during an emergency. There was some apprehension initially that maybe this plan would lead to Oak Creek or another jurisdiction having to respond to all emergencies in the zone. We wanted to make sure that wasn't the case, so what we did was we included several caveats throughout the document explaining that each jurisdiction is responsible for responding to their own incidents, and only when staff or certain supplies are depleted is when other jurisdictions should be called in for support. So, with that, the SEMP does not obligate Oak Creek or any other jurisdiction to provide any specific services. In fact, our mutual aid agreements that exist are separate from this plan and would essentially function as they currently do. So, the SEMP essentially aligns the ZONEE jurisdictions and policy. Components, so as I'm sure you noticed, the ZONEE SEMP is a very large document, so it's easier to think about it in terms of its components. So, the basic plan is the first 50 or so pages, and it includes background information, incident command system or ICS structure, some legal sections that talk about which statutes relate to emergency management, and then some finance sections. The next section is the emergency support functions, which really make up the bulk of the plan. So, our plan uses 24 emergency support functions, or ESFs, which guide emergency response. So, these are essentially different aspects of an emergency. They can be mass care, debris management, communications, et cetera. And what we did is we assigned a primary department to essentially be the lead for each ESF. And then we also assigned support agencies to each ESF as well. And this was all determined by the South Shore Emergency Planning Team, which is a newer team that was developed to essentially guide decision-making for the SEMP. And this consists of fire, police, and health representatives across ZONEE. And then lastly, we have the appendix. The appendix is still underway, but it contains contact information, inventory lists, and any supplementary documents that might be needed. Adaptation, so it's important to note that the ZONEE SEMP is adapted and highly informed by the County SEMP and the North Shore SEMP. And this was something that was encouraged to us by the Milwaukee County Office of Emergency Management. Reason being is that a high level of uniformity allows for more seamless collaborations between local, state, and federal entities. So, it's not uncommon to see very similar plans because they are embedded in very traditional emergency management principles. With that being said, emergency support functions were something that we didn't shy away from changing and editing because we wanted them to be consistent with the primary departments and their understanding of their role in an emergency. Process, so just to give some quick insight into the process, so initially, we established some quarterly goals. Of course, over the course of the year, some things changed, but this is essentially what we ended up doing. So, Quarter One was working on the basic plan and sending to city attorneys for their reviews and edits. Quarter Two was working with fire departments, police departments, and health departments across ZONEE to review and edit their assigned ESFs. Quarter Three was working with DPW, Public Information Officers, and the County Medical Examiner to review and edit their designated ESFs. And then Quarter Four, which is still ongoing, is assembling that appendix, and then also meeting with support agencies to review their supporting responsibilities. So, all in all, the SEMP is taking a little bit longer than we originally anticipated, but we are hoping to finish by the end of the year. And then lastly, the future of the SEMP. So, the SEMP will go through an approval process in each municipality, as we're doing today. We're also hoping to conduct annual reviews of the plan, likely through that South Shore or ZONEE emergency planning team. And then updates should also be made to the SEMP technically every time there's a real event or exercise through an after-action report, or AAR process, which is when you write a report about an event, you identify areas for improvement, and then you make those changes and reflect them in your plan. And then lastly, pending the approval of this document today, we will hopefully hold a tabletop exercise with our partners at the Office of Emergency Management to test and improve our plan, and we're aiming for sometime in spring of the new year. And that is all I have today. I did list my contact information in case anyone wants to reach out afterwards. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Chief Kressek if he wants to add anything.
Thank you, Brianna. We'd be happy to answer any questions about the documents. The last point, though, I would like to make, this is a, this was a rather heavy lift across four communities, police chiefs, fire chiefs, health departments, PIOs, DPWs. And I do wanna acknowledge the work Brianna has done to organize and oversee the development of this document. It's been masterful. She has done an excellent job with that. Speaking on behalf of the four emergency managers in ZONEE, the four fire chiefs, we are extremely pleased with the work that's been put into this document, and we look forward to answering any questions and potential adoption of it.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Ken?
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate and re-appreciate your effort on this as well. I understand this was an undertaking, so. Overall, Mike, you know, I always worry about, you get things like this, is, you know, and they tend to, they set on shells, and how are you deciding, you know, you know, because incidents aren't common. I mean, something that reaches this level of response is not common. So, how in fact do you, is it designated to, who is ultimately, makes the call when the process starts? Who is, who is, is there someone in charge? Because you can't obviously assume you're gonna have coordinate between four chiefs instantly, you need someone, it has to run point. How is that determined?
Absolutely. Great question, Alderman, Gail. You know, certainly when there is an incident, it starts locally. It starts within the community that that incident occurs, and at that point, it's a responsibility typically of the incident commander, which then traditionally flows through the emergency manager or deputy, the emergency management director, myself or Chief Stecker. At that point, there's a decision made whether to stand up the EOC and how much of that EOC needs to be stood up. At that point, it still remains a local event. When it begins to exceed the capabilities of the community, the call goes out for assistance. That would typically go to the channels of the ZONEE emergency managers. They would then activate their own particular resources that could be utilized to help support our event. At some point, it can exceed the capabilities of the ZONEE group. At that point, it would move on to the Office of Emergency Management in Milwaukee County. They would stand up their EOC, and they would support our activities. Obviously, the next step, once it expands past that, goes to the state level. It starts locally. starts locally. It would start locally with the incident commander through the emergency management director or the deputy director.
And they're making the call over one of those 24 slots that actually the incident falls under? Who's actually got the responsibility to make that decision?
So the responsibility for the incidents typically, vast majority of the time is going to fall under police or fire. And their incident command structure that's based on who runs a particular incident, obviously a structure fires, hazmat incident, fire department, uh, roadway motor vehicle falls on the police side of things. That incident commander would make a outreach to their management staff, their higher-ups, uh, for the consideration of the activation of the EOC. What typically happens at that point, there's a conversation between either myself and Chief Stecker, or Chief Stecker back in my direction, depending who has charge of that incident. From that point, the decision to stand up the EOC would be made.
Obviously, these things need to be practiced. Your tabletop is important and you don't want to have real life the first time you're, you're looking at it.
We, we identified a gap. I identified a gap in my management of the program pretty early on, once we got into COVID, on the testing of the system. Um, you know, certainly the COVID event gave us an opportunity to pressure test some components of it. Post COVID, we had the opportunity to really update that plan and make the changes we needed to, to address some of the things that could have gone better previously. The testing of this, um, is critical. The four emergency managers in ZONEE, the four fire chiefs, what we are looking at initially with this plan is really a, a crawl-to-walk training model. Uh, we're going to get ourselves in a room and work out the details on this plan across the four of us. So we have a total understanding of it, understand the own, our own dynamics within our own communities. In spring, we're going to expand that to a larger scale exercise involving many more community members. This allows us to work through each step of this plan, get really good at each step before we start to expand out that training. I would say a, a rather realistic, um, goal is testing of the plan on an annual basis through exercise.
Might assume, Mike, that, um, obviously there's other zones or have they all done this update or are they all working in this kind of stuff or not?
The other zones in Milwaukee County, so the North Shore, uh, this is a model that the North Shore utilizes, a, a combined SEMP. Um, the other zones currently do not. I do know one zone has expressed interest, uh, based on the early development of this plan.
Who else? Um, this is a very proactive plan. As, as Chief said, the North Shore has it. ZONEE has taken it upon itself and, uh, Oak Creek's really been spearheading a lot of this as it's evidenced by Brianna and Chief Kressek going forward. Um, we've experienced things, as he said, through COVID, uh, to work together with these communities. And we are, if this goes through tonight, we will be the first community in ZONEE to adopt it. Um, we don't do these things because they're easy. We do it because it's the right thing. And we're a leader on the South Shore and we're progressive. Uh, and we have the leaders that can do this and take this on. So thank you to you guys, uh, for doing this. And again, we have the capabilities that some communities don't, the expertise as well. So, um, it's the right thing to do, not just for Oak Creek, but for the region. So hopefully you guys will see fit to adopt it. Any other discussion or questions?
Greg, Steve, you guys are kind of in this business too. Any thoughts?
Well, I've been kind of removed from it for a while, but I know that, uh, uh, my previous work-life, having, uh, plans like this in place are always a good thing because you just, you don't want to create something when the proverbial poo-poo hits the fan, you know, and, uh, all of a sudden you're scrambling to, uh, find places to go and get people to do something. So, you know, plan ahead is always a good thing.
Okay. No further discussion. Motion on 12.
I will move to approve resolution 12445-110723 approving the ZONEE Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan as the Oak Creek's Emergency Management Plan.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And item 13 is community development and consideration of a resolution approving a minor land division lot adjustment submitted by Ivan Blaschak, North Investments LLC for the properties at 8910, 8940, I'm sorry, 9810, 9840, and 9880, South Ridgeview Drive. Numbers ain't working for me today. Uh, Doug?
I think your explanation, your reading of it's going to be longer than the actual explanation. This is a minor land division. There are three parcels there. They're combining the three parcels in preparation for a conditional use permit request that's pending before the plan commission, uh, as some of the operations spill over the property lines. The combined lot does meet the requirements of the M1 zoning district and plan commission has recommended approval.
Uh, questions, comments, anything concerning the property?
I didn't hear anything from the district.
Anything? Nothing, Ken?
Nope.
Okay. Um, that being said, motion?
I will move to approve resolution 12442-0-110723 approving a minor land division lot line adjustment submitted by Ivan Blasovich, North Investments LLC for the properties on 9810, 9840 and 9880 South Ridgeview Drive.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item 14 is consideration of a resolution approving a minor land division lot line adjustment submitted by Richard Barrett, um, for the properties at 7951 and 7971 South Sixth Street. Doug?
Yeah, again, this is a minor land division. There are two parcels there right now. These two parcels are properties being reconfigured, uh, in anticipation of, uh, the pending, uh, review of Emerald Grove Phase Four on these properties, which will add significant tax base and, uh, number of units to, uh, the Tuxell Town Score Development, really good project. Uh, just that the, the lot line configuration as it had existed didn't quite fit and we needed to, or they needed to adjust those lot lines so that, uh, you know, buildings were self-contained on the property. Uh, and no new lots being created, just, uh, amended the lot line between the two parcels. Plan commission has reviewed this, have recommended the approval. There's a few technical requirements that need to be taken care of, but, uh, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a good, good project. Look forward to getting this moving.
Questions, comments? Doug? Anybody? Okay, seeing none. Motion?
Cork moves to adopt resolution number 12443-110723 approving a minor land division lot line adjustment submitted by Richard Barrett Boulevard for the properties at 7951 and 7971 South Sixth Street.
Guzekowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item 15 is License Committee. I will turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on tonight's Common Council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares or concerns?
All right. Seeing none, Kirkowski will make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the November 7, 2023 License Committee Report.
Cork seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 16 is our vendor summary report for November 1st, 2023. Um, please take a look. The amount is $509,704.58. So if there's any questions, feel free to take the floor. And if there's no discussions, questions, um, motion?
Marshall will move to approve the November 1st, 2023 vendor summary report in the amount of $509,704.58.
Guzekowski will second. Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And just before we adjourn, just one announcement. This Saturday is Veterans Day. Uh, we'll be observed here for all those that are serving or have served. It is, uh, put on by our own Oak Creek's VFW and it is hosted by our own Oak Creek Fire Department at Station Three and kicks off at 9:00 AM. So there will be a ceremony and some presentations and then light refreshments will be served. So please take a few moments and attend Station Three, 9:00 AM. Uh, with that, is there anything else? No? Not adjournment, please.
Lorick moves to adjourn.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
All right. Night, everybody.